I want to really think and if you give me another day, I will.
So.
Yes.
One thing, um, so next Monday's planning commission meeting, I'm not sure if I can do that. That is actually um my grandson's golf tournament in Texas that we're going to be attending Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And we don't know when he's playing, so if he's not playing at that time, I can do it. If not, um, someone else will have to do the minutes or you can record it and I can do the minutes later.
Yeah, or we'll just not do anything.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna call the Brandon Board of Liquor Control Commissioners Board. But uh as that being said, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the rotten police officer was lost, Jessica Ebenhausen. Alright, thank you. Um approval or adoption of the agenda, I have a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Um, I think this is good.
We can do two and four, I make a motion that we combine two and four, items two and four as a consent.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have, we have to vote the minutes separate, right? Or can we put that?
No, no.
That's two.
Oh, that's just, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, we've got a motion to take two and four as a consent agenda.
Second.
A second.
Yep.
Yeah, it was second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Any public discussion on Brandon liquor control?
Who is B A B B S?
I guess I'm gonna have to hand that over.
Oh, I can, I have no idea, we often get like, you know, liquor requests for events from out of the town. Companies that come in and provide that service for people, so I don't, I don't know who they are.
Okay, that's fine, I just was curious.
Yeah, they get checked out from the Department of Liquor Control, so um we don't have, they give us very little information anymore.
That's fine, that, I was curious.
You don't say anything anyway.
Yeah.
Can we take it quick?
Anything else on public comment?
Just one second.
Yeah.
Uh LLC. I looked at. And then it says the one twenty-six, I don't know what that's.
Yeah.
Okay, the one twenty-six is a bar in Burlington.
Oh.
What I'm.
And Hillbarn Farm is just a net space on, aren't it just a good, so I'm assuming there's.
Something here that's.
Oh, so they just.
They're a bar, they've got a license and they're.
Yeah. That makes sense, they're just gonna have an event.
Yeah.
We did that for our way. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Anything else on liquor control? Now, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Undebatable, those in favor?
Aye.
We will move to the Brandon Board of Sewer Commissioners. We'll call it ordered and we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make the motion to adopt the agenda, one second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Oh, I just have it. Public comment, oh, I'm sorry. Um approval of that.
Make a motion.
Second.
Oh, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, uh, public comment. Just patience for the Board of Sewer Commissioners. Nothing heard. Consider waivers waiving interest in current sewer bill.
Sue gonna present this.
Um.
Oh, good.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So, um, we had a good meeting with Ray Counter and Christie Pinklin from the Fire District, uh, along with the Town Office staff. Uh, regarding the fact that the second quarter sewer bill, a combined bill, uh, was issued fairly quickly on the heels of the first quarter bill. And so the recommendation um is based on the number of phone calls of concern about people who were not sure they were gonna be able to meet the deadline. Uh, the recommendation to the Board of Sewer Commissioners is to waive the interest on this billing. Oh, sorry, not quarter one, quarter two, quarter two and quarter three.
The recommendation by who?
Uh, by me and the town clerk.
Okay, great. To the board.
And the uh water superintendent is gonna be making the same recommendation to the Prudential Board of the Fire District.
Okay.
Well, it's anybody's pleasure.
I, I make a motion that we, um, we made, we waived the interest on the current sewer bill.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just see. I'm, I'm sorry, Brian, it's up first.
Just these two quarters, right?
Uh, just one quarter.
Just one quarter.
So this quarter um was issued to be due on July twenty-fourth, and this would waive the interest that would normally accrue in August fifteenth. Just that one bill that came.
There were like two in a row.
There were two very quick, as the.
Yeah.
So people would have until August fifteenth to pay it without accruing interest to sell.
Right.
Any other discussion from the board? Any other discussion from the board?
Everybody in the town would be able, would just. Yeah, everybody in the town so that, cause it was felt right, it was like a bing bang boom.
So you're waiving it for one month.
One quarter, right?
It wasn't being they have.
More without interest, yes.
And so interest will start accruing in August?
Yes, for the, well, they don't accrue it, they just post it once a month on the fifteenth, so like the fifteenth of September, they would post some interest on bills that had not been satisfied.
Does Sue have any input on this?
No.
Um, I can, it, it, well, the bill is due on a really odd date, July twenty-fourth, so the only, the interest that would be suspended would be the August fifteenth interest for that bill. Giving some people a little extra time that are in some, because they also have tax, so they've had a sewer bill, a sewer bill, and then they're gonna have taxes. So it's just a lot of money going out the door for some people, we've had a lot of teary conversations and we thought that seemed fair. So basically, they would get almost really till, I mean, the next time we would do interest on that bill would be September fifteenth, so they, they get some time to pay it in piecemeal if they need.
So if they paid by September fifteenth, they would be.
Well, September fifteen would be the next time we would do interest, correct?
So they would have till September fifteenth to pay?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna be sure, we're giving enough, because if we're doing this, it seems like it ought to be meaningful and if the, the interest. Doesn't seem like it's a big um chunk to us economically and it might help people to make this um. And so I, I, I guess my suggestion is, is uh our conversation is whether or not we should just waive the interest on that bill entirely. And then just start picking up interest on the next bill when it comes along as that case may arise, because this is a special case. This is one where we've got two bills back to back, which are actually a good thing, cause we're getting caught up, right? And so um in place of, in, in compensation for the fact that these are back to back bills, just to plain remove the interest on that bill.
There enough of a cookie jar for us to do that?
Well, I, as I say, I don't think it's a big economic hit to us either way, but it's a big economic hit to people who are trying to pay these bills.
Well, I guess my question is. If we waive the interest entirely.
On this one.
On this one bill. And people don't pay it for. However, you know, if they just don't pay it, at some point, do we start accruing the interest again or a? A.
Can I interject again, I don't know that we can actually waive interest on a single bill, I don't think our technology allows us to do that.
Okay.
Um, so that may not be possible, um.
Yep. September fifteenth, fine with me.
Yeah, that seems like a reasonable way to be empathetic and responsive without.
For the information of the board, the next quarter is supposed to encompass April fifteen through July fifteen readings, and they hope to have those bills sent out in August.
Which will be another bill coming, because we're still trying to get caught up.
Yeah.
We may need to waive a month of interest on that one, I don't know. I, I, I think these, what we've discussed in the past, and I guess I would remind the board that we discussed this, is that um. These penalties often hit people who have the least ability to pay penalties and to try to help them, you know, just meet their obligation is in many ways. Great, you know, and, and I, I, I don't, I would prefer not to have these penalties be looming and um endless. Cause I, I, I don't believe that that's what causes people to pay bills, I think people wanna pay their bills and the more we uh make it affordable for them to pay their bills, the better.
And I guess my question is, I mean, I, I know we're trying to get caught up and, and. Oh, I applaud that and I value that, but is there a way to get caught up? Without like, yes, more, more incrementally, so that we're not slamming three quarters worth of water bills in a row? Yeah, I guess I could give myself as an example, those water bills are.
They're, they're meaning.
They're either. No, I have one in my bag that I didn't pull it, they're like four to five hundred dollars. There's so much money and like. You know, water and sewer, right? Yeah. No, I thought I had it on me, but um I was just curious, cause I would be able to say the right amount, so like that's fifteen hundred dollars all at once and it's from. The towns. Cause like normally. That's yeah, it's like normally you have, you know, three months to come up with that five hundred dollars each.
And, and yet to. Sitting out bills when we're trying to get caught up, it's like we've been so wanting to get caught up that I, I would hate to in any way, but the brakes aren't getting caught up. I think rather perhaps the discussion we should have is instead of just waiving interest for a month, waiving interest for three or four months while we go through this compression period. When everybody's getting bills and trying to get caught up and, and then we'll come out the other side and the, and the, you know, penalties will, will reappear.
It would be helpful to just have a note on there of when you can expect your next bill.
It's very hard, so.
So like even if it was.
When the town gets the meter readings from the Fire District, the combined bill goes out fairly swiftly after that. But there's a lag time that we found out about when we had this meeting with Ray and Christie. Between the final reading of the meters and those readings can be turned into actionable numbers that the town can send the bill on, it's nearly a month. In a good situation, so it's nearly a month.
Okay.
May I interject one more time? Um, so the next billing will mark the last billing for the year for us. And, and, and we will also be assessing an eight percent penalty because the board chose to penalize um sewer bills as well a few years ago. So if you're talking about being nice and generous, it'd be nice to suspend that penalty, I think, but you know me.
And that was, that was a question. Sorry, Sue, that was a question I had was, is interest the only penalty for late payment, so there's an additional penalty for payment.
Right, eight percent penalty, correct.
And interest happens um as the quarters are going along and the penalty happens after the end of the year.
That one. I.
I, I, I just think this is, um, this is a great chance to explain to our um, you know, the town. That we've been behind for lots of reasonable reasons and that we're trying to get caught up and part of getting caught up is this cascade of bills of things you, you consumed. Those, none of these bills are wrong, these are all um water and sewer bills that have been consumed. But as a compensation, we're waiving fees and penalties for, till we get over this.
If we can afford to do that, that. I, I feel like I've gotten so many water bills that I feel like surprised by, that I would love to do that if we can afford it or to do some. Something in that direction, if we can.
Don't we have a motion on the floor at this point in time?
We do.
Um.
So the motion for waiving interest for a month.
Waiving interest on the current sewer bill. And Jan, you had a question?
Yeah, so in hindsight, we just see what we did ourselves by sending out a bill a month apart when the town was lax on the billing, which has been explained. So I don't know why you didn't think ahead and put at least two months in between sending those bills. You're already how much late, so another month or two wasn't gonna make a difference, then you wouldn't have this problem with interest. So now you have another bill coming out before the end of the year, well then don't send it out right away, wait a month or two. Just send that the next quarter out or you, cause you're just compounding it.
I, I understand the concept we do, I do wanna just state that the town and the Fire District both have ongoing recurring expenses that are furnished by users fees. So if we have a bill ready to send out to users, I believe it's prudent from the point of view of both the town for wastewater and the Fire District for drinking. That the bill will be sent out, people who are able to pay it without injury to themselves will generally make an effort to pay it without injury to themselves. And I think the board's talking about making some provision for people for whom a quick succession bill is gonna be injurious.
You were five months late on sending the first one out.
I understand, I'm, I'm water customer myself, I understand that stability is not where we've been at with the system. And I really feel like the meeting that we had uh with Ray and Christie was super enlightening as to why it is, we, we kind of went through the whole. Um, process from the point when they first go out with a machine to take the meter reading on, you know, uh, on each individual customer's meter. Through to like, what does it look like on the collection end of things?
So I, I withdraw my motion.
Can I ask a question?
Of one month.
Yeah, sure, got it.
I'm Brett Mueller here, what are the causes, I'm sorry, you keep talking about reasonable cause for this, what is the cause that this has occurred?
So I'm a little hesitant to speak for the Fire District, but I will speak for the Fire District as I understand it. And that is that, once the meters are read, there's a certain amount of what they call misreads, which are readings that appear on their face to be inaccurate. And because of what it involves to go back and look at historical usage for a property and try to get the correct. Try to get a reasonable meter reading that will coincide with what's going on, coming from the actual meter to the reader of the meter. That process takes three weeks in a good um, in a good scenario, if nothing else is going wrong, is what Ray told us.
Okay, and is, is this one of the reasons you wanna go to a flat rate, because the meters aren't working pro- properly? Or the readers aren't working properly, everything was going smoothly for years and now all of a sudden.
So.
They're not, not.
They wanted to, they emphasized during the meeting that the meters are metering properly. And when they talk about a misread or they talk about a delay, it's generally a case of not the meter reading improperly, but that information not getting out to the reading equipment. So they believe that the meters are reading accurately and that's what we base the wastewater bill off on the town side. Um, is it one of the considerations that was in my mind when I suggested we get away from a metered system? Yes, it was one of the considerations that was in my mind, I don't necessarily feel as strongly that that aspect is important since speaking with Ray in the meeting. Uh, I asked him if that was standard in the water supply industry, he said that they had been above ten percent with the previous generation of meters here. And that that's more in line with what the industry standard is um for doing estimated bills, they basically solve the problem by doing estimated bills. When the reading does not appear to be reasonable.
Yeah, I've got a problem.
And they've been doing that for a period of time and it just uh escalated to this point, is that? Is that what I'm to understand, that this would be going on for uh a longer period of time and it's just not.
Is that estimated readings happen in every water district that, that builds based on consumption, yes.
So I, I'd like to make it a new motion.
We had one more.
I'm sorry.
Uh, well, my, my, over the years, I, I've only been here twenty-five years, but, and I was here before the meetings were put in and, and someone would come in and help too. But one thing I've noticed, I'm one person. And I pay fifteen hundred dollars a year. Now, I know, I mean. I, I wa, I use my washer once a month, I have a dishwasher. I don't, there's this one person bathing and my dog Molly, she doesn't drink that much water. And so I quest, I, I have, I've been looking at those bills and I've been going, good God. There's so much, so much water and sewer and I, you know, I'm, I'm a anti-flushing, if it's yellow, let it mill it. Okay, so I, I suspected that my meter was not correct. I, I have to be perfectly honest with you, that the reading was wrong and they were just, because every quarter it's the same amount, summer or fall. Whether I water the flowers or I don't water.
Very little of your bill is actually based on consumption, because I, I'm in the same case, I, I live by myself and, and, and I, I, I bet you.
But it's supposed to be on the meter.
Well, but my point is that.
The fixed cost too.
There's the fixed costs, as you'll know from the analogy to the power company.
Yeah.
Uh, both of your bill, almost all of it is fixed, and if you actually look at the part that is various by consumption.
Yes.
Probably less than ten dollars a per, per bill, which means that in the course of a year, we could go four times, maybe forty or fifty bucks is actually consumption. So you could use a ton of water and you wouldn't pay any more money. But, and it's because the, the bill to the town is much more based on the, the number of, of spigots we have and not on the volume of water. And that's why they've been moving in this, in this direction.
So why is the water volume listed on the bill? If it's not important and it doesn't count.
Good point.
Why is it? Extra for that part.
Well, and, and, and we're gonna have that on the agenda, is that one possibility is we're gonna move away from metered and we're gonna go to a tiered and, and that's coming up. Um, it, it may address your concern.
We're, let's finish this motion, this discussion that we're on right now, so you wanted to.
Yeah, I guess I'm ready to make another motion, which is that um, uh, after hearing Sue um describe the situation and understanding the notice of, of penalties and fees. I make a motion that we waive penalties and fees for um August, September, October, November, December. And we pick up um as uh we've been doing in January with normal um fees and.
Do you wanna go to the first of the year?
Yeah.
How much money is that, like, just as a.
The total budgeted.
Yeah.
Interest revenue for the whole wastewater operation.
The interest part.
The interest on.
Okay.
Is fifteen thousand dollars on an eight hundred thousand dollar operation.
Okay, so really negligible compared to the figure, okay, and penalty.
Um, I don't have it broken out, so currently, I don't.
We could ask.
Oh, so that was included in the fifteen thousand?
Uh, Sue would be the one to give like.
Probably, yeah, that, that would be included.
I.
So Sue, how much would we be giving up in a round sense if we did what I suggested, which is to waive penalties and fees for the next five months? August, September, November, October, November, December?
I, I'd have to look, I, I don't have that, I wish I had that information for you, but I'd have to actually, I wouldn't even dare make a stab, to be honest, I, I'd really wanna look at. At, at the last interest we did and, and what that amounted to, to be honest.
For today, could we postpone the interest and then revisit next meeting with that information? Or do we wanna revisit the final? So the twenty-fourth, so. Like we could just waive the interest for August, so that way people can, can feel at ease for that. And then when Sue has the information about penalties. Then we can revisit if needed and, and consider so that we're making a really educated decision.
Well, we're waiting for a second.
We're waiting for a second on Tim's motion at this point.
To, and then opens it up for discussion.
Okay.
So is there a second on Tim's motion? No second, we'll go back to the original, consider waiving interest on current sewer, current sewer bills, we have a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we waive interest is what Seth and Sue would originally planned.
I'll second.
We got a second?
Yeah.
So just, just to clarify, so this would waive the interest that would post on August fifteenth.
Yep, it's just by a month of decision-making time for the other thing, but in the meantime.
Any other discussion? Ready to vote the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. I just have it.
Can I add one more thing before you leave that topic, though? We really have to get the blessing of the Prudential Board if we're waiving interest and penalties. So I'm just throwing that out there too, cause that, that's a little bit more complicated. Um, but they would, it would require their input, um, and what, can I a, a, answer one thing that, that Jan was talking about too, Jan? When we're billing this stuff, we, we try not to have bills really close to tax due dates and so. This particular billing was very perplexing, cause it, we would have needed to put it out and to September. Which is really when we typically want the next bill to be due, so we, we, we would have been. Kicking the can down the road a long way to try to straighten this out, does that make any sense? I know what this back-to-back billing has been a pain in the butt, but we really try, we have a schedule that we, we'd like to get to. Where people aren't paying bills very, really close to tax time either, so that's what we were trying to accomplish.
There's never a good time for a bill.
No, there's never a good time for a bill.
All right, moving on to discuss staggered usage rates.
Mr. Chair, this was requested by a select board member, so perhaps.
So, um, this was actually building off something that Tim said. Like in the midst of another conversation, but just. As we're thinking about, it sounded like there was a suggestion from. Who at the state level, a bonding, okay, that, that it's really important that we have stable funding for the sewage and water because. We have all those fixed costs, we have to be able to count on it. Um, and as we've seen during the pandemic and now Irene and now another flood like Irene, things really can be surprising and so like all of a sudden you can have. Big change in what water's being used because you can't get to downtown or you, whatever, right? Or you're staying home from germs, so that um, one idea would be to have. And this is really just still in the idea stage, so I was, maybe this is a, a beginner's error to not. Like to bring it up when it's still in the idea stage, but we'll see. Um, just that, you know, would there be a thing, a way to, to get the. So you're paying by capacity, right, capacity billing is the alternative. So you'd say, okay, well, like you have two bedrooms in your house, Brian has five bedrooms, I don't know, I'm just making up. And then you'd bill by that, but then it seems all well and good, right? But maybe I have a four-bedroom house and Cecil has a four-bedroom house and I decide I'm gonna have a hockey rink in the winter and I'm gonna garden my, my greenhouse all summer and I'm gonna use.
A swimming pool.
And I'm gonna fill my swimming pool, and you know what, it's cheaper now that there's capacity. And so, um, so I thought, what if there was a way that, you know, you look at like the average usage, so I don't know anything about gallons, but say we expect, okay. A thousand gallons per bedroom, I don't, I'm making up a number, right? And then if I use four thousand gallons more than what's expected for my capacity billing, I pay for that amount that's past the expected. So that there's a little bit of like, if you wanna fill your hockey rink and your swimming pool and water your flowers as a hobby. Then you've gotta sort of decide whether that's worth it to you, but we don't accidentally. But we don't accidentally pass my hockey rink filling on to you who's saying, well. You know, I bathe myself and occasionally my dog and this doesn't feel.
No, not even.
Not. My dog doesn't get things, but anyway, so that, that was just, just a, like a, something just to. Plant a seed, not necessarily to do anything like now, but. Yeah, and when we asked about, should it go in the meeting, I was like, I guess, and then. Maybe it was too soon, I don't know.
So I guess one thing to think about, though, is on the opposite end of the spectrum, so we have the flat rate. For your four-bedroom, four-bedroom house and my four-bedroom house. And you have the hockey rink and the swimming pool. And I use the same gallon of water for everything. Like, I wash my hair with it.
Yeah.
And I water my plants with it.
And you're using your rain barrels.
And I use my rain barrel and I, and I take it from my rain barrel, wash my hair with it, water my plants with it. And then pour it down the toilet to flush the toilet with it, you know, so I'm not using any water.
Right.
Is there a way?
Oh, to go for under use.
To go for under use. So, and then we're back to usage rates.
Right.
And so.
So you still have sewer in there, because they're combined.
And every night, and what we're talking about right now is water rates and we're actually, we have nothing to do with water rates, it's, it's on the sewer. We need to get to and that's what we kinda need to stick to here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to do sewer.
It does, it does have something, yeah, something to do with sewer rates, but.
I, I, I think the other question I would have is that, you know, the benefit of going to a, um, a staggered use rate is that we don't have to worry about reading the meters. And yet you're describing a system where you have to read the meters and, yeah, so in some ways.
The best of both, but also the work of both.
The work of both, so I, I'm not sure there's a benefit with that. And, and, and the last thing I would throw in, because I've, I've pitched this each time we've brought this up, is that I am a total advocate of, um, a consumption, um, base rate. Because I think we should incentivize conservation, even in a state that's full of water, we still should be trying to encourage people to conserve. And so I, as much as I understand the board bank wanting us to have very, very high, um, uh, base rates. And, and almost no consumption rates, I, I would like to see us move, um, back towards, uh, a consumption rate.
So, so the point, my, my thought in having this is just. When, you know, when Seth asked me, should we put it on, and I was like. So, and so it's just a, just planting a seed.
Right, I mean, and I think it's, it's a good thought experiment to try to make like, as, as Tracy pointed out. Here's sewer and there's water.
Mm-hmm.
But kind of, your idea is more to the sewer and water being the same.
And, and realistically, when you talk about the, when you're talking, well, you, the way it's set right now, you are getting charged for the water that goes through the meter. But it's actually not going in, if you do the hockey rink, it's on the pool, it's actually not gonna go back into the sewer.
But you're still paying.
But you're still paying.
Water that goes out, a rate bug, it goes in the sewer, gets you a free.
But you are still gonna pay for it.
Cheating the system with a rate.
Exactly.
So, I guess my, 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 my point being is, that person has filled their pool. And filled their hockey rink and watered their garden. They're paying the penalty. Because.
On usage.
They're putting, they're, they're running that through on the usage part of the sewer, of, on the sewer, see what I'm saying?
Yes.
If, I'm, I'm paid if they're paying on usage.
Right.
They're using, they're paying, they're, they're essentially, that's a penalty to them, cuz.
It's never going down.
It's never going down the sewer, and it's a benefit to the sewer.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's something that, I'm glad you brought it up.
Yes, raising her hand.
Yeah. Go ahead, Sue.
We need to unmute, unmute.
I think I misheard when we had our conversation, Heather, because I thought you were saying. That we, we would continue to have metered rates, but people who used inordinate amounts of wa- water and sewer would get.
Oh.
Pay a higher rate, so the staggering would be, so there would be a always a consumption charge. But that consumption charge would increase with use, thereby creating the incentive to not overuse, does that?
There is another.
Say that again.
That was what I understood from you, so, so that, so the staggered rate would actually create an incentive to use less. Because the more you use.
I see.
The more you pay, that was how I heard it.
So. But again, that's. Subject everybody to my new.
That's okay, but again, that's water.
Well, water sewer.
Well, we would only control the sewer side, but.
Exactly, so I mean, it's something that we'd have.
Just something we can, it's, it's a discussion, it can be carried on and.
Mission accomplished, everybody's thinking about it.
Everybody's thinking about it this time. Very, any, just burning.
Just one quick thing, I think in the past, Ray had said, if you are filling your thirty thousand dollar pool and told him you spilled your pool, he would take that off, but didn't go through into the sewer rate.
Right.
The town's sewer ordinance does not permit that.
Oh, okay, well, have it.
It's like, it, it.
Once at that address, they did it.
But it no longer prevents that at all, okay.
What's in the base rate? How, what is considered in the base rate? I hear these guys talking about.
What is, what does it pay for?
No, what, how do you come up to a base rate?
How are you getting your base rate?
No, nothing with bedrooms.
It's, it's per unit, it's per individual meter.
And, and if you look at your bill, the base rate actually has to do with bonds that we're paying, uh, I think, cuz I think there's like five items. That if you look, they don't have anything to do with usage consumption.
Well, what I'm concerned with is looking at this, like, here is, I live alone. I don't like the sounds of these saying, going to a four-bedroom house thing. It's just me, I don't wanna be paying for those.
For the extra bed.
I, I agree, I'm in the same, same.
But, but the point is, as you said, we're paying for infrastructure that was put in and changes that were made to the water system and sewer system. I was here for that, um, and the meters, and, and we're still paying for that. Um, so I understand that topic, I do, I really do. I look at the building.
You pay that, yes.
I understand that everyone pays that, well, no, not everyone pays the same for that. Because you're not charged by how many gallons of water you use. Based on, you know, the, the, what we owe for infrastructure. If you've got two pools. I'm paying the same as the pool people, per gallon.
Right. When I lost my house on the house fire, I paid it for a year, not even having water and sewer, but I had it through my property, so I had to pay it.
Cuz you didn't call to have them.
Yes, I did.
Oh, you did?
They would not do anything about it.
Well, that's wrong.
No, no, I paid for the base.
The base rate, what you're saying, it is the service, you paid for the service. All right, we're gonna move on, any other discussion on this staggered usage rate? If not, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
Yes, let's adjourn, let's start.
Second. Any discussion, undebatable, adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, all those in favor, aye, close. Yeah, we'll move.
There you go.
We'll move to the select board meeting, um, we're gonna call out the order. And could we have?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody want anything changed around? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. I just have it, approval of the minutes. Can we have a motion on that?
Making motion to approve the match.
You know, motion, right, right, approve the minutes, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Cecil, any discussion on the minutes, corrections or anything like that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. I just have it. Town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board and members of the public, I did print my report and it's on the table there, uh, by the sign-in for anybody who, um, is here in the meeting. And if you're not here in the meeting, it's on the town website, you can read my report in detail. So I think I won't go through any of it, except to say that, um. For the awareness of everybody, the Isle District Road north of Hollow Road may be closed all or part of any Monday through Thursday for the next three weeks. So the town grew to get ready for the paving. And there will be signage that's been on front porch forum and the school district fire, police, rescue have been notified. So that's my actual report, Mr. Chair, I do have some updates that happened after I submitted that, so I'd like to share those with the board and the community. Um, today, as you all know, we're, um, undergoing a fairly significant amount of rain. Uh, the town appears to be faring well through it, um, we've been spared the destruction that many of our neighboring communities of south and east. Have been going through, um, Bill has gone out and done a survey of certain low-line spots that are classically problems for us. I've been out to do one, uh, I did also go out after, um, after the end of the workday and it appears that. Everything is okay, other than the low part of Stonemilne Dam Road close to Wheeler Road is only one lane wide right now. But if we can get through the evening, it'll probably be sufficient. So because of the water, um, I had a site visit scheduled today with Tom Markowski at the waterfall. Um, and that's been canceled, so next week, well postponed until next week, because wouldn't be able to see much. And likewise, uh, the, uh, fuel tank auction winning bidder, uh, postponed his travel from Maine. He actually started off in the direction of Vermont and turned back, he was supposed to pick up the tank and he will do that, uh, either later this week or next week. I provided the board the revised quote for the wood chipper engine replacement that you authorized at, at a previous meeting. Uh, another announcement for the community, the town office and the town clerk's office will close half hour early tomorrow at three thirty P M for a staff meeting. Uh, and then I did have a little bit of, uh, of news that happened last, late last week, so. The state of Vermont grant administrator for the park and ride, uh, down here, uh, by the town hall. She called and informed us on Friday that, uh, the grant had actually expired October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Which, um, was problematic from the point of view of us not having closed the grant and not being ready to close the grants. What we need to do to close the grant is to do the final course of pavement and put some stripes, uh, in the parking lot, and then we'll be all set. Um, but the options that she had available to her and to us. Is that they could grant a nine-month extension without going before the designated downtown board, I chose that option. However, the nine months is from the original expiration date, so it actually ends like in two or three weeks. So, um, we're hopeful, Bill is working with Wilt Paving about coordinating with the folks at Tenny Brook to make one big paving thing happen before the end of July. Um, the, the other options were basically to close the grants with work, with work done prior to the initial expiration date being part of the grant and the rest would be on us. Or we could request a one-year extension, but we would be asking for an extension of an already expired grant and she did not. She had not had any experience before the downtown board with that yet, so she recommended we go this route first to get a second, first time.
Okay, and we're still on the hook for a fifty percent match.
Right, so far.
And. The, in your report, it talks about tract expensive to date on the order of eighty thousand dollars, but that is without the.
The final.
The final course of pavement. Okay, and so we're going to need to come up with a match of at least forty.
I would think.
Possible.
Depending on what the, when the final payment will be, the painting of the stripes will be done by the town pool with the town.
Okay. And this is one of the grants that. Happened where the matching fund was not identified.
So this.
At the time.
Right, this grant was presented to the board, uh, at town meeting night in twenty-twenty, so it was right before COVID. And it was, um, like a six-thirty select board meeting before the seven o'clock town meeting. And it was just presented as a, here's the grant, they'll pay up to fifty percent if we get the grants. The select board said, yes, there was no funding, uh, source identified for the town match at that time.
Okay. And we need to come up with the match at the time the grant is closed, or?
Um, I'm, if Sue's still here, she would know more about the timing of that.
So, I am still here, um. We, well, we basically have paid for everything so far out of pocket, so ideally, yeah, we would just. We, it doesn't have to come with the grant, I don't think we have to identify how we're paying the match for the grant, but. At some point, we need to earmark some money. Um, to offset that because we haven't budgeted for it, so it's outside the budget, so we'll have to, when it's complete. Earmark where we're gonna get that money from, does that make sense?
And, and when will that be?
Uh, whenever you guys wanna do it.
Will be up to us.
Okay.
Are up to you, so the way, the way all these reimbursable grants work is that she establishes, uh, a fund to pay it out. As it goes along and then you get the refund, but the refund from the state will be half of it and then you've gotta like find a place for that other half that you've already spent to live. Either out of one percent money or out of ARPA money or out of the general fund or out of a budget, like, those are kind of our big pots of money to, to make that balance out as you know.
And. I mean, forgive me for just like harping on something, but is this something that should have been budgeted for?
I think it's reasonable to say that, um, the source of the match should have been planned. Yes.
And this is hopefully the last one of these.
I don't know that.
Okay. So we might just keep coming across other grants that we've won that haven't.
Well, Sue and Bill and I have done a look and Jackie has done a look and. We think we did a look, but I presented the board a matrix, like ongoing project matrix at some point, pretty quickly after, um, you, you put me in the spot.
Sorry.
And, and this was not there.
Yeah.
Because this was not on the awareness of any of those people.
And to be clear, like, as a reminder, you've been here since what, April?
April twenty.
So, it's not, I, I really am not trying to.
Oh, I'm not.
To, you know.
Yeah.
In fact, I'm not, I'm not trying to make you feel like you should be able to recover, I'm just.
Now, I just, I, I appreciate it and I think that this is a, a, a good, um. Learning experience for us in terms of making sure we kinda know where money's gonna come from.
Which is. You actually, you say those big pots of money, they aren't. We're spending them right down.
We are.
So we have to try to find this money somewhere and.
What I'm saying is, we're limited to those pots of money, those would be.
Well, those, those.
Those pots.
Right, those pots are very limited now.
Understood. Which is my final statement. I would respectfully suggest that the board's designation of ARPA money and one percent money over the last few meetings. Is most appropriately viewed not as new spending of money. But as taking a comprehensive look at previously agreed grants and purchases. And rather being careful to assign the funds to those. So that the town and the board do not find themselves in a position of not having funds geared to match a grant. Due to no systematic tracking of those obligations and assigning of funds to meet them. I think that what we're doing is good management and I think that what we're doing is prudent financial stewardship. And it may seem like we have blown through a half a million dollars in the last three select board meetings. It's actually not the right way to look at. The right way to look at it is that the town extended itself to do a lot of great projects, using a lot of really valuable. Unuseful sources of state money to accomplish things that the state of Vermont agrees with us will make our community a better place. And where the town was lacking was in simply writing it all down so that we didn't overextend ourselves in terms of providing these grant reaches. And that's what we're trying to present, to prevent from happening in future.
Thank you, yeah, and I, I think that, um. This has been, and these discussions have been really helpful to me over the last three meetings to kind of understand. How we get where we got and what we need to do, and I think that, um. You are correct, that kind of writing it down is, you know, essential, yeah.
Mr. Chair and Mr. Town Manager, I'm very happy to hear this conversation, I was, uh, going to wait until our comment section. Um, I've been out of town and I got to read the Brandon reporter, uh, from June fourteenth. Uh, which is a meeting where you folks, uh, discussed a lot of ARPA and a lot of local auctions, tax things, and it clearly had the appearance. That a whole lot of money was spent one night by the board. But considering that I have sat in your chair for a lot of time. And also been on the Budget Committee, I knew that wasn't really the case. That a lot of money was, uh, allocated that night, that, that needed to be assigned to grants. Uh, which I'd like to at least quote for the record, that the fifty thousand dollar. Uh, which I'd like to at least vote for the record that the fifty thousand dollar from McConnell Road. Twenty five thousand for North Street and a hundred and twenty three thousand for the Arnold District Fund, all commitments that were made. Before some of you were even on the board and before the town manager was here. And every time that there's a grant, there's always something that goes with it and I. Was planning to come tonight to try to remind you of that because it always seems like, oh, a grant, that's great, we got free money, but there's always. Some things. Um, also, and, and I, and I don't want to sound negative because I'm trying not to be. Cause I try to look at things from a positive standpoint and I think everything that you all did that night was really positive. And that there was hard decisions made. By reading the vote count, that two people voted yes, three voted no, this and that, you guys worked hard with that meeting and I, I kind of wish I was here for it, but I was out of town. Um, and then the second part of my discussion kind of goes on top of that, which was on the same night, it was two hundred and twenty three thousand dollars for. The new DPW truck, which again, the truck needed to be purchased. It was a board decision a year ago to allow the ordering of the truck. But again, money wasn't set aside or allocated in any way. Um, and, and I find that to be really, you know, a tough pill to swallow, so to speak. Further, as a former select board member and a budget committee member. Um, I'm amazed that none of this came out last November and December when we were having all those meetings. Um, everybody in the budget committee takes time out of their schedule to go to those eight meetings and, and a lot goes into it and. What I am totally stuck with in my mind was is that the process and how that process goes and making sure. That that process is maybe better followed next year, but that the, the budget process starts by the town manager. And the bookkeeper preparing the first draft in meeting with all of the department heads. And that's where that all starts and then it comes to the budget committee and the select board to. Review it and massage it and ask questions and make sure things are there. And I know last year there were eight budget committee meetings, I believe it was eight, and I know I went to seven of them. And I know that the missing piece there. Um, was that none of the seven meetings that I went to was our town manager app. Which, that's where information really has to come in and that's, you know, where. I at least want to at least say, I'm not blaming anybody individually, but I don't want this board to be criticized. For not having the information or whatever. Uh, the, the items that we asked for in all the prior years. Um, and, and asked to try to get a quarterly was project trackers. Because there was another year way back when we first got going that we thought we had a budget all set. And then all of a sudden, when we started sorting through projects, we realized we were missing a lot of things. And without a project tracker, you can't get, and that was something that we asked for for years and we, we did not receive. Um, and I really love the idea that Seth just had as, as much as a uh rent tracker because some of these grants. Uh, hang on for years and years. And, and there's got to be a way of keeping track of them, so. To conclude, we're really lucky that we had the one percent money. We're really lucky we had ARPA money that we could fall back on. And we've come out of this hole, but. At the time that we made decisions in November and December and we even cut into some of our reserve. We could have been short tracking ourselves and today is a prime example of how many towns are having roads flooded. And problems that we have had to dig into our reserve in the past for. And so last December, we made the decision to dump a couple hundred thousand dollars of our reserve and do other things. And we did it without having the facts and so I just want to remind you all to have the facts and I applaud all the effort that you have done. But um, it's something that we really need to be financially careful of going forward and I, and I love. I was gonna wait and you're talking about it really set the stage, so thank you very much for your job.
Actually, I think, I don't think we had eight meetings. It may have been six of the most.
Say that again?
We had. We didn't have any more than six, but our town manager was there to some of them. So we don't need to lay blame to anybody. It's done, let's move on. You know, things happen and we all make mistakes and let's go to the next item.
Dan, could I say something? I'd like to applaud the discipline and transparency that is occurring now. Um, with our, our town manager and select board. I don't think it, it, it happened for many, many years. And I think there is a difference and I don't think you folks are deficit spending. I think you are crisis managing something that occurred. In a previous administration, so to speak, so um, that, that's it. Thank you very much for, for your discipline and transparency.
Dan.
So another thing you need to remember is the select board is the final decision maker of the budget. Town manager just prepares it, gives it to you, you guys add, delete. Move a number up or down or like the capital budget, you remove thirty thousand for the cruiser, that just pushed it down the road. But what I really want to do is, can we use this budget shortfall as a learning experience? Seven months was the previous town manager, then it was Bill, then it was Seth. So for five months, it wasn't the previous manager, it was the current people. So could. I'm just thinking, let's use it as a learning experience, go back and look at the data. What did we purchase in, in, in that time period? But anything that been purchased after July first, so then we wouldn't have been over as much. Um, and then could you tell us like what departments were over budget and what were under budget at the next meeting? And if you could send a copy of the final budget to the budget committee.
Josh, you want to answer that? I would be happy to send a copy of the final budget to the budget committee. And to anybody who wants to see it. Um, I think that. The number. That may have been discussed or that has been discussed, it's been discussed. Um, Sue from time to time reminds us that nothing's final until everything's fine. Like, we know that they're going to pay tonight, they'll be paying bills from last year. Definitely the next meeting, they'll be paying bills from last year. Sometimes I recall it going into August that we pay bills from before June. Um, when you ask about, could something that was expended in the previous fiscal year be expended in the following fiscal year? Uh, the answer is generally it's super not discretionary, which fiscal year you spend money in. You spend the money in the year that you incurred the obligation to spend money, like there's not a lot of discretion on that. And you asked the question, I think in the context of to reduce the amount of the shortfall. So um, I was very pleased to have help from the town treasurer. She came up. Um, after the discussion about that there would be a shortfall in the amount and so forth. And she reminded me that there are certain accounting adjustments that have to be made that were not reflected in the numbers that we were talking about. She has some deferred revenue that gets adjusted every year. She had another estimated uh amount on the revenue side. And so at the time that Sue took the number that was being talked about, which was in the seventy thousand dollar. Overrun range, the number turned into being in the three thousand dollar overrun range, which on a three million dollar budget. Is, to my view, an acceptable margin of error. There will be bills tonight that will add to that. There will be bills next week that will add to that. But when the man comes from Maine and gives us the money for the fuel tank, that will add to that. Bill's got some sports sponsorships that have just come in and so forth that are adding to the revenue side, not the deficit side. So um, I know as a select board member, I from time to time would be a little bit bemused or frustrated with. This is a moving target number, I'm just giving you a snapshot number and you have to kind of work on it and not think of it as etched in stone. But in, that's actually very true. You know, like the number that we look at is going to move a bunch of more times down and up and down and up, just even in the next four weeks before that. That fiscal year finally does get closed out and at that point, it's probably the most useful time for us to be talking about where did the budget land? Like at this point, we're talking about where we think it might land, um, but we don't really have the front.
Yeah, when it's all done, if you could send it to the.
Absolutely.
Budget committee, I'd appreciate it.
Can I reply one more time? I also just, I was not talking about the, the. General budget, I was talking about local options tax and, and, and the truck. And you know, like, if we had the information on the truck, there were many options that could have been done. It could have been a loan, a lease. A bond, it, it could have been other things. And if that would have been discussed at the meeting if there was no.
Right, and I mean, it was, it was, actually, I think it was when we ordered the truck, it was. We knew that we had it, it wasn't a year, it was an eighteen month period. Um, but i- if we did, if we'd have figured out at that point where we're going to take that, it would have been a lot nicer.
And if you allow me, Mister Chair, and you, you did ask what were the kind of things that ran over in the budget and.
No, I'm just thinking department.
Yeah, Jackie gave me a little bit of a, kind of a survey. Um, so in buildings and ground, a lot of it was buildings and grounds, so in buildings and grounds, the heating fuel ran over budget four thousand dollars. The electric bill ran over nine thousand dollars, which was a little bit surprising. And today we did get a notice in, you'll probably get one in your bills at home. We got a notice from Remount Power that they're asking the Public Utilities Commission for a five plus percent increase in next year's base electricity rate. Um, I'll take responsibility for the ADA door openers at the town office. That was a nine thousand dollar item that was not budgeted. But I really felt strongly that um I had talked about it during the town manager search process and it really should have been done when that building was. Rehabbed in the first place. Um, and then outside of buildings and grounds, there was a number of highway things, um. Uh, Jackie advises twenty eight thousand dollars over on fuel in highway. Four thousand and some change on signs and posts. Twelve thousand on chloride, which is the dust keeping down thing. And five thousand on winter sand, so there's nearly, there's fifty thousand dollars or so just in highway operations, so to speak. We are, I think it's kind of become apparent that we've been underfunding what we expect of the highway.
Oh, I was just gonna say excess fuel cost inside just because fuel went up so high that.
I don't know why it would though, because it was a mid commodity. So really, I talked to Sean about it, um, it's not because the price changes because they consumed a lot more. And I asked them about why might we have consumed more and he said, well. The more you have us out like actually like digging our own ditches on the side of the Arnold District Road and rebuilding like it's our fuel now instead of contractors. You know, and like a lot of those jobs previously have been put out to a contract.
How will Bill is the heat pumps?
Right, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else for town manager?
It's not an expected, unexpected that one out of ten years you might be off from the budget. I think the last nine years we've been under. And this is the first time their basic operation budget was old, but that's a darn good track record.
And then I think it's not unexpected when you write budgets as closely as the town granny enjoys writing budgets.
Eighteen months in advance.
Well, no, not even that, just like our budget, our tax rate, as I said in my letter, it has been basically flat for seven years, which is kind of an exceptional accomplishment. But when you get close like that, it means you're gonna run a risk that you're gonna deficit spend it.
Anything else for town manager?
One quick thing, Brian, you said the heat pumps for the nine thousand dollars electric over, over time then?
Uh, we don't know that.
We don't know that.
It's an idea.
It's an idea.
And. You know, the, the. Fuel, new fuel gallonages change because you can't say price because it was up to six bucks a gallon for a while. Last year never got that high.
The good news is the green fleet um, uh, policy closes the end of June, which we had. And I'm waiting for the end of your data and I'll be able to give you an exact number for how much fuel we used for heating fuel. For propane, for number two heating oil and for electricity and we'll be able to have those numbers really um, in a snapshot.
Yeah, because I wondered if it's gonna balance out, because I, I usually burn a thousand gallons at home and when the fuel went up, I, I stopped using my. Radiators, my steam heat and. I burned seventy five gallons of oil last year.
Exactly.
With one heat pump in my house, my electric bill went up eleven hundred dollars. So I saved three thousand, four thousand dollars.
I'm very optimistic that we're gonna see that, the data, but I promise the data will speak the truth.
But you also have to realize you're using that building upstairs a lot more.
That's true.
So that's hard to put into a budget because you don't know what that usage is gonna be. Is it gonna be hot? Is it gonna be cold? So now it's easier, we'll be able to plan for the future then. We use the building more, so you know the expenses are gonna be more.
Right.
What benefits of the heat pumps are when it is cold, you have a cheaper way of heating it than you do with fuel.
And when it's hot, boy, that's when you really feel the benefit up there, so.
Increase independent because it's now air conditioned.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yep, any other discussion? We'll move on to the rent directors.
So I didn't include a paper version uh this week, um, just real brief, uh, wanted to thank everybody for the participation, the Brandon Independence Day. Pass for the people that made it happen, um. And uh, we put around the heels of another event this past weekend, Davenport, a second annual. Uh, Davenport Electric Fest and I wanted to thank uh members of the committee, Jack Schneider, Nate Doty. Uh, Elizabeth Haggerty was the intern from Castleton. Uh, Chair Emily Eckert, uh, and then Doctor Kevin Thornton, David Hammond came down and presented the Brandy Museum, Brandon Chamber. All got together to make it a fantastic event, along with their sponsors, Beta Technologies, that is South Burlington, GMP. Go Vermont, Oliver Subaru, Positive Energy and Stone Motors. They're all, that was a great day, we had a. Few more people than we had last year, I think it really uh moved to Otter Valley, certainly made it a. Much nicer event for us, certainly with the uh infrastructure and support stuff, it's definitely nice to have a real bathroom.
Do you know what the number came out to for attendance?
Over, a little over four hundred.
Great.
And the last year we were around three hundred, so it was.
It's a start.
Increase, and again, it was crazy hot day. What was really exciting is that we were able to partner with Solar Fest. They brought down their electric trailer that will be able to power three food trucks. Um, throughout the day, so they have to run the generators, um, and it would make it raining with them to have them for. The carnival, do lighting in that field, save the expense for us. As far as, you know, creating actually new lighting in that field, we're gonna use their solar trailer to drive lighting for some of those nighttime events. Um, so make sure to attend Solar Fest this weekend, fifteenth, sixteenth, down Steinberg, Steinberg Road. Uh, we have new events coming up, uh, new event, August nineteenth for the Love Don't, it's gonna be a car show to help uh. I'm assuming to raise money for the dog park, it's something Collins put together and we have our uh. Ready doing our fall planning, working on our new structure with uh trying to create um, these stipend. Commissioners, they get stipend commissioners. To help with support with organizing some of our fall sports. Our first test run will be with soccer and with football. Um, we'll see how that works as far as a new structure and soliciting some of the. Film topic organizations about providing some support for the increase that we're gonna have to put to the uh user fees. And to help pay for some of that and yeah, that's about it.
Thank you.
I think that the um, for the love of the car show dogs, I think it's actually for the Rutland County Daily Society.
See, I knew she was ready for, for, for dogs and, and I love the fact that like our car show sort of uh. Gravity task, I guess, with having a weekly car show, bi-weekly car show up in front of Rip the Mountain Distillery, uh, Colin has been. Attending every one of these car, car shows and handing out information about Brandon, and so we're starting to see some really nice cars that show up and so. Have, having attended a thing in Stone Motors, they will raise fifteen hundred dollars for. The Vermont Museum, their car show, there's a ten dollar car show, so we're hoping we can do something similar for the society.
Any things for our rent director? If not, we'll move on to public comment, anticipation and I'll start. The board and I guess I would like to start my, I, I'm sure you've seen it on television by now, but as of July sixth. Um, state has, has uh. Coupled with Vermont Public or um.
V P R?
The, yes, and for putting in power state or charging stations. That you can get grants for, um, you can take that through the Rutland Planning Commission. Um, it'd be like Hannaford's um apartment buildings, I kind of, the way that I look at it, I understood it, we can probably. Possibly apply ourselves, um, but there is, I think there's seven, I think there's seven million dollars. It'll be awarded to throughout the state for charging stations. For EV vehicles.
And, and you like that idea for Brandon?
I, I mean, absolutely, if we can get uh, if you can get something into Hannaford or.
Great, yeah, I'll do some of that.
Um, but if, if you call, if you get ahold of the Rutland Planning Commission. Um, he can give you the grant information, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think I, I saw that and there's like, um, depending on whether it's. Yeah, I I think I I saw that and there's like um, depending on whether it's. Like uh, I had, I think it's like Hannaford's would have to ask for it.
But what I, I guess what I'm getting at that, um, it'd be nice that Hannaford to come. To the town and say, give us a hand getting this.
Right.
Off the ground, uh, the apartment buildings up here. That was another one that they said, you know, in places like that.
So maybe some of our businesses downtown.
Some of our businesses downtown, I mean, there's, that that money is available.
Yeah.
And I, I wanna. I I didn't bring a paperwork with me and I apologize on that. But I don't think it was much more than a twenty percent match. The match was considerably long.
Yeah, I thought it was even less than that.
It might have been. I I mean, I think that was a max, it was a twenty percent.
Was really excited when I saw the email come through, so excited that I sent it out to the schools and some of our larger business owners downtown. The town, the municipality reply is only five percent match. The schools and municipality will have a five percent match. And there's a possibility, it's gonna be competitive and they haven't put out the information yet. There's a possibility of getting a level three charger, they're like competitive level three charging station, which would be exciting for us to have a brand, but certainly.
They didn't, they didn't have any information at that time on the level three, it was level one and level two. And I just thought that was.
Yes, oh, it's exciting. Jeremy Gildrin is the person on the RPC who is a Leicester resident, who's a Otter Valley Union School.
Right, and I, right, he's a new, new solar area, yes.
And he's at, he he was at Davenport Fest, he was all over. So I'm really excited. I think we're, it's a good opportunity for Brandon to really electrify.
Anything else from the board?
No, thank you.
Um, public.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question regarding.
Brad, Brad, just a minute, we got Bernie.
Okay, sorry Bernie.
If you have a committee that's gonna work with this charging station, Chandler would be very interested in being like this thing, we said we wanna be. Very sensitive to parking needs.
Right, that, right.
And we have some ideas, we we will like to be a part of that process.
Brad?
Yes, uh, uh, what is the future of charging with everybody teaming up with Tesla's? Uh, system, is is it? Is it gonna evolve to something else at some point? Or I mean, while Tesla, if they go to Tesla's system, then it's Tesla.
Well, let let's first. Let's first be clear that when you say Tesla system, it's not a a different piece of um, hardware other than just the handle.
Okay.
Receptacle. And kind of like back in the days of VHS and Beta and, you know, other kinds of technologies that we've lived through. I think it is gonna sugar off to a single standard. Um, and some states are moving towards the Tesla handle. Um, and so I I um, I know um, many cars have the ability to to charge with either one. And some cars can only charge with one or the other, and I think we can keep tracking that as we go. Um, if we. A handle on our charging systems, it would be a relatively small thing to change a handle.
And isn't it quicker though? Is it, isn't it much faster charging?
Well, but again, this is where the handle really has. Because I mean, I can charge with my Tesla handle either at a slow rate or a medium rate or a faster.
Okay.
All it has to do with what's feeding the power.
Okay.
Uh, our charger down here in our 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 parking lot that we have for the town. Forty volt charger and whatever kind of handle, it'll still be a two hundred and forty volt charger.
Okay, great, great. No, thanks. I just, I I was curious about that. I didn't know what it meant. Thank you very much.
Anything else on public comment?
So the Fourth of July parade brings a lot of business to Brandon. But we're nothing, we don't even think about safety. And I was disappointed in the parade. It used to be in the rules that you cannot throw candy from the floats. Because you throw candy and the kids lunge for it, just as a vehicle's coming by, if it's a Shriner doing this. When I was a judge one year, we thought for sure this kid got killed. From our angle, I don't know how he missed him. And after that, it was supposed to be in the rules that you can't throw candy.
I was wondering.
You wouldn't believe how many.
I would believe.
Andy. To me.
My kids are.
They shouldn't be allowed back in the parade the next year. And I know the rec department had a vote. Do you have the rules that you were given?
No.
To look that up?
I uh, I know that my rec department guys do candy for sure.
Yeah, but I mean, you you were in the parade, so do you have the rules, the guidelines? That's what I need to see, to see. Because.
I can, I can pour them on you. I mean, I don't, I don't fill out the flow thing. I I don't participate.
Go back and look to see. So then we can get it for next year, so they know that they can't be in the parade again for two years if they throw candy.
It sounds like something you're definitely passionate about. We'd love to have your help on the committee because we're desperately in need of volunteers to help with these kind of enforcement issues, safety issues. I mean, it's me and 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 five people that are trying to put this on. So I'd love, love to have you come help us with with advocating for that position.
Even the first person in the parade that's standing there telling the floats, okay, you're next, you're next. Specifically tell them right then and there, because whoever did the paperwork probably never told the kids on. Float or the adults on the float that they couldn't hand out candy, throw candy. So the message doesn't get from the top to those in the parade. That's where the disconnect, I guess, is.
But it seems like this is really good feedback for the parade committee to um, up their game next year for making sure the participants.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned it here, so it's in the minute, so.
Yeah.
They're gonna, they might read them and go, oh, yeah, we really need to.
Again, we'd lo- love to have some help with enforcement. Certainly at the beginning of that parade, you could be that person, that'd be.
Yeah, I'm busy on the fourth, to be here.
I just never knew that wasn't.
Anything else from anybody for public comment?
So Tracy, um, uh, it wonders of a modern technology. Um, I just got a text from our energy committee um, person and just for the, mostly for the benefit of the Stephen, um, to have it um, clear in the. In the reporters. The RRPC um, has a five percent match for government um, in the grant for electric um, charging. Ten percent grant uh, match for commercial. And um, no levels three unless you are more than twenty five miles from another level. So Brandon doesn't qualify due to it's too close to Middle Brand Rutland. So we would never have a high speed charger. And and I I must say, um, just since it's come up, I'll very briefly point out that that's not a bad thing. Because the high speed chargers typically start for fifteen minutes and you're gone, which means you barely get out of your car. And you don't spend any time in our community. Where the level two is a much more appropriate one for our community, where people stay in at lunch. And like they wander around town a little bit, and um, it's, it's a really good level charger for our community.
Right. That's what we talked about at the meeting. The lo- the level three is just, it's quick, but if you leave the level two that they're here now, hopefully they'll spend some time in the. Businesses that are here.
You could put a little sign on it saying, waiting for your car to charge? Go get a muffin. Buy a book, buy a book.
Bernie? Just to finish this up, uh, three, four years ago, we talked about the testing charger and that they were free. You just built them, they remain bersie. What's happened with that? Do you have any idea that we?
Um, Tesla has evolved, and I'm not sure where the current um, state of that is. Because um, I do know that Tesla was doing them free, for free in the early days, but I think that was more than four years ago. Okay, but this grant is almost as good, cause I mean, it's almost free when you only have a five or ten percent match.
Can Tesla charge though?
Yes. Yeah, I I actually have an adapter in my glove box that lets me charge up to any charger and then.
Anything else on public comment or discussion? If not, we're gonna move on to our upper discussion. And. I guess we'll. Start with, would you like to start? We'll go right around on the board here first.
So, yeah, I mean. And I guess, from my perspective, I just. We've been touching on this. Um, in connection with like specific line items, like should we be using ARPA for this, should be that or not? And I I would like. I think I would benefit personally as part of the discussion. To have a discussion not in relation to a specific line item that we're looking to fund. But more as an idea that we have approximately five hundred thousand dollars uncommitted ARPA funds. And just to kind of get an idea of where we as a board want to go with that money. Um, and one of the things that uh. I want to think about, and I reached out to Devin Neary at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission about this. And he's unfortunately on his honeymoon, so he um, isn't here to like talk to us about it. Is ways to maybe leverage that money so that instead of it being five hundred thousand dollars that we're working with, you know. Is it double that? And and part of that is talking about grants and like as Brian brought up, you know. We need to be mindful of, and and Doug also, that when we get grants, there's things that come with that. And so we're talking about my matching money and stuff, but it's still kind of a way. To to grow that pot of money, and I guess so I just wanna think about being mindful of. When we start talking about, this is what I want to spend the money on. To make sure that. We're leveraging it, thank you. And I think.
Strategic.
So we're being strategic.
Yeah, that would be. Rather than saying we have a hundred thousand dollars, let's spend it on something. Let's find something where we can.
Right.
Get a match to that hundred thousand.
Right, and I guess one of the things that we've. Comes to mind is the Union Street sidewalk. So there's three hundred thousand dollars matching that we're, a match that we have to come up with. And it's tempting to say, well, we've got five hundred thousand dollars ARPA. Let's take three hundred thousand dollars from that and throw it at the Union Street sidewalk. Um, but. I guess then my question is. Are we better not taking all that three hundred thousand and throwing it at Union Street? And using maybe part of it for Union Street, but using the rest to leverage for some other sidewalk project that we might need to do. Or some, you know, other larger project. And I open the floor. Let me, you're on the other side.
What's that?
Yeah, well, which I think would actually speak to that. I think that, I, I mean. It seems inarguable that it makes sense to be strategic and to think, well, is there a way that we could? You know. Use it as a, like, and I'm still learning the ropes as you just saw with my sewage discussion. Going early on that one, but um, you know, I just wonder, that makes sense to me, to just be a little strategic about like. If we spend something outright, maybe be more strategic to get grants. I don't, I mean, that seems obvious to me, but I also, one concern that I had was that if we use this money. For normal budget things, and then we run out. It's gonna be a rude awakening when we have to, you know, like that just was one thing that I thought was that, are we gonna accidentally? Get people. In like ourselves, used to spending this money instead of. For our normal money. I don't know. I just, that was one for discussion. That was one thing I thought.
Salt shed, be a good thing to put money into, it's gonna be there a while. Doesn't take all that much of uh, our ARPA. And uh, I think some of it, she went to the sidewalks.
So in in the salt shed, is that something that, and this is, again, it's I think, for their. Other sources, like with the town hall roots, put some ARPA money and get money from other sources. Do we know if there's other sources for the salt shed grants, things like that?
I don't. Bill, Bill, you kind of brought this up.
I had not even attempted to look at a grant.
I don't, I don't.
Same kind of problem we ran into when we were talking about the rebuilding of the highway garage. Don't have highway garage to grant, they don't have salt shed.
Okay. But those would be straightforward expenditures, okay.
Yeah, um, I I like that we, um, and the number is actually five hundred and fifty nine thousand sixty one, I think is what the total came to. And so um, it's a size, it's a sizable chunk of money. And um, I, I think what continues to be my um, goal with with ARPA spending. Is that it has the greatest good for the greatest number. And that we um, we try to, I like to term a legacy project, something that when we look back, we say, wow. I'm really glad that, you know, fifty years from now, they'll look back and say, I'm really glad fifty years ago, they thought to do this with that extra money. And I I would like to um, encourage us to, to think about things like salt sheds and um, town garage. Cause I I would like to see us have a new town garage. I think we need one. I know from an energy standpoint, we need one. And um, and we clearly need a salt shed. Um, but I see those as being things that are appropriate to bond. Um, that these are expenses that the town should carry and we're, we're not a highly indebted town. And so I, um, it makes sense for those things to come through as kind of regular spending, you know, that towns do. Um, and I continue to hope that we can um. Find gems of spending that we wouldn't normally have had money to spend for. Um, my view of leveraging, just to finish off my little part of this, is um, and I've brought it up before. To positive reception from the board, is that um, you know, a solar project of some kind actually produces income going forward. And so in many ways, it's a a, an investment that then pays itself back, that then can fund future town things. And so I continue to hope that um, we may find that, that project. Thank you.
And. I, again, I I think there's a lot of projects, beneficial projects. Um, salt shed is a definite. We do have a lot of town uh, buildings. Windows for the, windows for the town office. Doing something on a roof here. Sidewalks are a big thing. I, you know, I believe that uh. It's just something that we should. Need to start discussing now and hopefully in the next, what do you say we have for time on that? End of next calendar year, and it, it just has to be assigned. It just has to be assigned. It doesn't have to be spent, it just has.
End of twenty four. Right, and I think it has to be spent by twenty twenty six.
So, you know, we want to put this on here just to have a discussion. I don't know, when we wanna. Start having a bigger discussion as far as. When we wanna try to come up with a signing.
Talk about actual projects.
Talk about actual projects. Open to suggestions on. How we, how we wanna handle this.
So somebody approached me to ask, you know, gosh, are you soliciting, you know, ideas again? And um, and even though we did uh, solicit ideas in the very beginning. Um, I think it's appropriate to um, you know, have something in a reporter um, show up as, hey. You know, now's the time, if you've got some ideas for how to spend five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the town, we'd love to hear it. And then I would love to have an agenda item where we actually decide, so this could stop happening over us.
That's, that's, I guess that's what I'm at.
I think you are, yeah.
I I would like to get this, I'd like to get it moved on.
I agree, um, I agree.
So that we could uh, get it behind us and and get that money to where it's going to be.
So shall we um, say that we take um, the next select board meeting to um, solicit input from the community? And then we have one select board meeting after that, when we actually make decisions on what to do with our, are people comfortable with that?
How does the rest of the board feel that?
I thought it was in the minutes of the last thing you need to do that.
Well, it's something we've been talking about and talking about. I mean, one thing I I would note is um. That uh, at the Town Plan Community Forum that we had back in May. We were soliciting ideas of things that people, and it wasn't specific to what would you spend ARPA on. But it was ideas about things people might like to see happen in town. And there were many projects that were um, brought up at that meeting that. And those minutes are on the town website, um, but things that were brought up at that were things like um. The connecting path to uh, Forestdale, um. Uh, there was discussion of whether or not the town should buy the old barber shop. And re-rehab it and turn it into an information center and public bathroom. Um, which many of the businesses in town would appreciate since they don't have public bathrooms. Um, uh, skate parks, um, there are lots of recreation ideas. Um uh skate parks. Um there were lots of recreation ideas that came up. Um but there was also sidewalks. I would say actually the 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 two things that got mentioned the most at that meeting were uh better sidewalks throughout town. And a swimming pool. Those were the two things that people talked about wanting the most. Um and then, but there was a wide range of things. Um so I I would love to maybe. Again, put in the paper saying we're soliciting ideas. Um should we have them email them to Mr. Hopkins or? Okay, and and then he can compile them and maybe present them to us at the next meeting and, you know, we can at least start the discussion then. I'm not sure whether uh uh I'm ready to say. We'll talk about them then and we'll decide at the next meeting, but at least. By the next meeting, if we have like a list that we can really start the discussion, and I think that would be helpful.
I don't care about sidewalks. I've been working, walking on dirt roads all my life. I'm finding that. But one thing I want the board, select board to think about. Um and the best example I can think of is this building and the talk about the roof. And I understand it's slink. And I'm like, I've grown up with slink and. Don't do slink. Just don't do it. Put up whatever you want. Um. Oops, that's major. Um, I know who it is, just ignore it. Um but because it's a beautiful building. And we if and we want good good roof tiles. Even a standing seam metal would be good, the grounding cord. And then solar panels. And by that time, hopefully NASA will be giving us. Their units, which a one inch square of the um. Solar panels that were uh invented in nineteen eighty. And I know that because I was shown it. One square inch will light up a light bulb on a gray dick. Now that I think is something that if you're going to, one, provide energy for this huge, this is a big building. We're cooling, we're heating, we're lights, right? It's the biggest, it's the biggest building in the town now. So. I would ask that the select board think about. Uh not just where, but how can we work? That's all I'm going.
With the with the building's historic designation, can we put solar panels on it?
And we don't need to use slinks. I I have verified that with somebody. And so rest assured that slate's not a given.
Right.
The solar's not aiming in a direction that favors solar for the site. So it's a good idea, but it's.
Well, but if you're going for the NASA square, not the black stuff that is out here now. It's and and talk to uh. What's her representative? Daphne Jerome, she knows about it and we talked about it and NASA has it. And um. They uh, you know, you you'd have to dance and write a grant and make a fuss, but you could get it. And one square inch. And it's clear, it's clear plastic, it's not black, it's not green, it's just clear.
Thank you. Yeah, I was, I was think I was gonna ask, maybe Tim just answered it, whether we have the determination, whether. Both the town office glass and this building have to be done in compliance with uh historic preservation. And then, secondly, on top of that, I don't use this building myself very often, but I think all the money and all the work. That the friends of town hall have done over the years, it's silly not to really seriously look at the roof one way or the other. And I think that Brett Buehler had offered in the past that in lieu of um. Slate that that he knows of fabrics that look just like slate, but last longer and and whatever. And I think it would be foolish for the board to not um get information from Mr. Buehler. Maybe he's still online.
He is.
He'll be sleeping.
No, no, I am. I'm still here. Uh folks are asking about the flooding in Vermont. Um. Yeah, there there are composite materials that look like slate. And I could research that. Yeah. Absolutely. That's okay. Uh architects might know more about it than than me, but uh, you know, there's, there's a lot online that we've got. Could do that.
I know you've talked with uh at least one company, no, about the windows in the town office. What about the uh smaller upstairs rooms? That would be excellent ARPA.
It's very interesting to school it. So Bob Reed came over within the past week or so and said the town had ordered and paid for. Fixed sash wooden storm windows, which he had created and they are shock and we have picked them up. Those would be. Um we would remove the aluminum triple tracks that are on the outside of the second floor windows. And he said the idea with these is that they would be permanent installations and the building would essentially on the second floor. Other than the door, the porch becomes sealed. Which I guess it functionally is because it's so loud where it is that there's not a lot of window opening for fresh air. But I'm not sure whether that's what you had in mind or not. I had something different in mind until I found out that the town had apparently already ordered and paid for these, but not taken delivery of them, but now we're taking delivery. I don't know whether it's all, there's eighteen windows upstairs. The three that are over the water were done. When they had a lift in the neighborhood kind of thing. So I don't know whether there are fifteen windows ready to be installed on this bill, on that building or not.
That wasn't what I had in mind, but if we've already paid for it. We might as well use it.
Surprise. Are there any from my house?
After all the ARPA talk, if you guys did your idea, you know, two, three, four meetings where it may be. It would be nice to have you not talk about it anymore. And then. You have till the end of twenty twenty six. So if if you did or under twenty twenty four. If you decided in a year that something major came up, you could ship ARPA monies out. If that's not locked in, you don't send it to the federal government. That's just locked into your program, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
You could, in an emergency, we could ship something out and ship it in up ARPA money, then it takes.
We can claw it back, is what you're saying.
But we could just then stop talking about.
As long as we haven't set the project in motion.
I was gonna say.
For the money.
Too far down, but I I get the point. That's a good point.
Anything else on the ARPA discussion?
Yeah, I'm just a little historical.
Absolutely.
So I I'm excited about what you're doing and the course that you're going down. I want to encourage you and the whole community. And I just wanna read you a couple of sentences. From page ninety two of the Brandon history that was printed in nineteen sixty one by the select board. They were the publishers. On May twenty second nineteen forty seven, the town farm was sold by the town together with all livestock and equipment. This had a great potential for good in town government affairs. However, by nineteen forty eight. It became apparent that unless a positive policy was established for the handling of this fund. It would be wasted piecemeal on current expenses of the town of insignificant value instead of performing notable service for them. So I think that this is um, I think what you're doing is going to hopefully avoid running into us. Piecemealing ARPA to the point where we can't really point to anything significant.
On the bright side, no one has expressed any interest in updating that town history as much as I've asked them to. So we don't have to worry about them saying something nasty about us. Just don't read comments.
Anything else on ARPA discussion?
Um well, I guess the the last thing that I it 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 seems like during the town manager's report, there was an identification of trying to close out. The grant on the um. Yeah, heavy, 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 heavy breath. I hear you. Um and yet I I I'm I'm. Wondering if we should address the need to find matching funds for closing out that grant. We're not, we don't have to do that.
Wait till we know the final number that has to get split in half.
That's a much better answer. So sure, let's do that.
Yeah, you should. We add that to the end.
We're into it for at least forty. Three weeks to pay the lot, put stripes on it for the state to pay half of the payment.
Right.
I I just wanna make sure we didn't pass over that unnecessarily.
Um when it comes to soliciting ideas, I always have kids in mind, because I'm an educator. Is it possible to use something like the? Maybe this is just gonna get laughed out of town, but something like the like, like one of those payment drop boxes for people who don't use computers, just toss a note in there. That like totally inappropriate? Yeah, just, you know, so that you can tell. Anybody who feels like they would like to, you know, I'm thinking of like.
Why don't we just ask people to use the payment box that's in front of the NSHB school and in front of the town office? And we'll just let the town clerk know that there's gonna be some suggestions that she should just.
And it just, I mean, I just always have kids in mind and that seems like that would empower them. And you could just put a note on it for a week or two that says. Give us your wish list. I don't know.
Anything else on ARPA discussion? If not, we're gonna move on. Amendment of development review board alternate.
So uh this is a cover sheet and a letter of interest from Mr. Eater, who is interested in the development board alternate spot. But in terms that ends uh June thirtieth twenty twenty six.
Okay, buddy's pleasure. I'm moved that we gratefully accept um Mr. Eater's offer to serve the town on this one.
I'll second it before he changes his mind.
We've got a motion in a second to accept Mr. Eater's. Um application. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pause. Now let's have it.
Can I, can I just respectfully um suggest to the board that every member should vote positively on every motion?
Oh, and I'm sorry, my my eye was just that way. So.
Thank you. We're gonna turn the next one over to setting the property tax rate for year ending.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So um you all have in the packets and it was published um a calculation that the town treasurer has made. Based on the town's grand list and all of the um various components of our tax rate, including the town, the fire district, the school district. The voted appropriations and the exempt properties. And veterans exemptions. Um so it's before you to be signed so that she can issue tax bills. And she's still here if you have questions.
So I make a motion that we um uh uh assign this, uh accept this tax rate for the um coming year.
I'll second that.
And um I would take this chance during discussion to um highlight for the benefit of the Brandon reporter. That um it does show um four years of town tax rates. Um and we're going up by point zero 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 one um percent, which is um. Uh something to be proud of for our town.
Alright, we've had that a motion seconded and it's open for discussion. Is there any discussion on it? There's not one uh. Make her vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause. Passing unanimously. Uh fiscal. What's anybody's pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. To approve a warrant of a hundred and seventy seven thousand four hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents.
Second, I'm second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pause. Uh. Anybody's pleasure on that?
Okay, I'm okay. Can I make a motion that we um uh approve the warrant for eighty nine thousand one hundred, one seventy nine and eighty three cents?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause.
Aye.
Those are all ayes for the.
I'm sorry, I was saying aye, cause I didn't see it in time to get, but that's the aye.
Everybody's. Private favor.
Yes.
Yeah.
I had a question. What were the twenty one chairs for?
Those are the little cafe sets that are sprinkled around town.
Yes, the DBA, the DBA purchased those.
Sidewalks, there's a bunch of little like, uh they're kind of like messy looking chairs and small cafe tables.
I had seen them. I just noticed their town.
We are going to recess. Any, any uh? Somebody have anything for the good of the town?
Um I just want the chamber conference auction just got over, was very successful. And I want to thank the town for their support and why we have to use the the town hall. Um being able to have a permanent hall that we can then advertise as being the location that's going forward. Does the ability not have to be issue new banners for every different space? So it's gonna help us be more successful with that. And we had uh over two hundred and fifty, almost three hundred bidders that came in multiple time check your base. So the town hall got a lot of exposure. We had many people say it's first time in it. And they loved it, which is incredible. We're air conditioned. Thank you for that. Um and as I said, Dennis Martin and the friends of town hall have done a great job with that and they supported us tremendously through this process too. It's not easy, but it's like setting up a little store in about three weeks and being. Out of it in two days. We were super happy with it and we've we've told everyone that we're moving forward and it's a successful thing for everybody here.
Anything else for the good of the town? If not, we're gonna recess. Um so everybody can say their goodbyes and then we're going into executive session. So we just need a motion to adjourn, right?
Yeah, no action taken.
Taken on either executive session. And. Need a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
There you go.
Any discussion?
Yes, aye.
Sure, you get it right.
Say an aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're done.